Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Paul O'Leary, calling for this August 2, 22 Harris County Board of Commissioners and Commissioner Andrews believes in our invitation.
Please join me in prayer. Dear heaven, Father, we thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for the rain that you have sent upon us today. We pray that you would also send us spiritual rain, that we would exhibit the fruits of the Spirit and the love and gentleness and kindness and lean not to our own understanding, but act beautiful wisdom, Lord, and follow your guidance in the name of Jesus, we pray.
Please join us for the budget list.
I pledge the letters to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice over all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of amendments for a call for a session of July 11, 2022, a special call meeting of July 14, 2022, and our regular session of July 19, 2022. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the amendments of the call for work session of July 11, 2022, special call meeting of July 14, 2022, and the regular session of July 19, 2022.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
No.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is a second public hearing as required by the state on the county's 2022 military rate. During the July 11, 2022 special meeting, the board decided to reduce the 2022 property military rate from 9.38 mils down to 9.13 mils. All state required documents have been prepared, published in the newspaper, and posted to the county's website for public review. Based on the 9.13 military rate, three public hearings are required. The first public hearing was held this morning at 11:00 a.m., this being the second public hearing. And then we will have a third public hearing August 16, 2022. After the third public hearing, the board can then adopt the 22 property tax military rate. If approved, the property tax bills will be distributed during early October and due on December 20 of 2022. Are there any comments from the board? At this time, if there are any individuals who'd like to get up and speak on the military rate, we'd be glad to hear your comments this evening. Individuals will be limited to a five-minute timeframe to make any comments that come through on the military. Is there anyone who'd like to make a comment on the military rate, the proposed military rate? If there are none, then we will move on to the next. Yes, sir. If you'll please come and put in to state your name and address as well.
My name is Spring Ryan. I live in 224 Ward, the drive to Tomahawk. And this military rate is proposed about the amount of land you can buy?
No, sir. No, sir. That will be our next, which will be this evening, under the UDC.
Oh, yes.
Yes, sir. This is just the rate at which your property is taxed, as your property taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on that? If there are none, we'll move to the next item on our agenda this evening, which will actually move on to the fifth item on our agenda this evening, which is under new business. There have been agreements with the Georgia Probate Services Inc. for magistrate court, probate court, and superior court to provide probation supervision services. We have the attached agreements with the Georgia Probate Services Inc. for the magistrate court, probate court, and superior court. The prior agreements were executed in 2017 and are required by the state to be renewed at least every five years. Copies of these proposed agreements have been provided to each court as well as to the county attorney. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the agreement with the Georgia Probation Services Incorporated for magistrate court, probate court, and superior court.
We have a motion. Is there a second? I will second that. Is there any further discussion? No? And all those in favor? The motion carries.
Would you mind if I release Sonny Mitchell quick to have him send them with her?
Okay. The next item on our agenda this evening is for our county manager. He has a project update course.
Mr. Turner, Board of Commissioners, the vertical workup thing, this is all the projects the county's working on during this fiscal year, beginning July 1st, and most of them will be all completed by June 30 of 2023. So to hit some of the highlights, number four, Unified Development Code, the planning commission heard this, has recommended approval to the board. They held their meeting on July 20, and the public hearing is tonight. And if approved, it'll take effect in the future when the board decides it wants to take effect. That's number four. Number six, complete the new EMS volunteer fire department facility in the Northwest Harris Business Park. I think it's on bid deadline is this Thursday, August 4th, with more consideration of that bid on August 16. Number 22, complete the design and bidding construction of the new public works facility. The initial design meeting has been held, and we are progressing with that project to build a new public works facility for our public works department using this plus $20,019. Number 24 and 25, purchase a new playground for Mulberry Park and the community center. Our RMP is prepared and it was distributed yesterday. Bid opening is August 30, with more consideration in early September. Number 26, replace the aged dehumification system at the community center. We're preparing bid documents that have been going on project plan, described in bid notes there. Number 37, complete phase five of the Meadow Road Trail. Painting is almost finished, all the way from the grocery store downtown Hamilton. They should be finished completely with everything in the next 30 days.
I don't know if they have any, is there a target?
We talked about to have a ribbon cutting ceremony today, maybe in the first weekend in September, because even though the painting is almost done, garden grounds have to be installed, a little bit of cleanup here and there, some pedestrian signalization has to be installed. So even though it looks finished, it's not yet.
Sorry, you didn't need to worry about this. But you don't think they did not want to use it until it was completed or anything else?
Everybody else seems to be using it.
What's that, the art of lounge too or anything else?
This would be right at 10 miles from downtown Pine Mountain at Chipley Street. Downtown Pine Mountain, Chipley Street, they'll be finished painting that Friday. So downtown Pine Mountain from Chipley Street is the beginning. That's mile marker zero, Pine Mountain, Chipley Street, at the Mary River County line. It goes all the way south to just south of here, right by the old middle school.
Cross from it.
Across from it, next to Spartan Lawn Mowers. So that's where it ends, and that's right at 10 miles.
And since we did have a ribbon cutting when we started this in Pine Mountain, then we did want it to come for store, and then we need to have one in Hamilton, so we now have another trail ahead. So I think we need to look at doing another ribbon cutting for it.
And we're targeting maybe the first week or two in September. We're getting all those details right now. And then phase, number 38, phase six, is from where it ends, across the street from the old middle school, Spartan Lawn Mowers, all the way to Mulberry Creek. That's an additional 3.1 miles. That's probably designed right now. So that should be finished this time next year. So all in all, it should be 13 miles. And if you go back, it's 26. So that's a really exciting project, phase five and phase six of the Meadow Road Trail. Number 41, a new fire training facility built behind the Hamilton Volunteer Fire Department. That project is ongoing. Several design meetings have been held, so that project is in good shape. Number 43, improve this to the Northwest Harris Business Park. That project is on bid. The bid deadline is also this Thursday, August 4th, with more consideration, August 16. Number 47, rejuvenate the airport's apron taxiways using GDOT grant funds. That project is beginning really, really soon, hopefully this week or next. Number 53, construct a new Southwest facility at the transfer station on Orangeville Road. Because the project has begun, so that completion of that project should be early 2023. Number 56, a new waterworks administration office. Construction is going to start really soon and be completed in early 2023. And that new administration office will be on Grant Road, right next to the existing waterworks facility. It'll also have a drive-through capability to drive through and pay the water bill. That doesn't happen, that we don't have now. Again, this should be finished early 2023. Number 58, Hadley Road Waterline Phase Two. That project is being permitted right now and should be finished by the end of the year to extend water lines on the Hadley Road, 4,000 linear feet. Number 59, upgrade the US-27 water lines a distance of 25,000 linear feet. That is in conjunction with the GDOT TIA project of lining US-27 from Muscone County area to State Route 315, including a roundabout. That project is being led by GDOT probably late this year, December, I'm here in December of this year, they're going to go out for bid. So that project is starting sooner than later to line US-27 from about Muscone County line all the way to State Route 315, including a roundabout at State Route 315. That's a very exciting project using TIA funds. And as part of that lining project of that US route, we're adding water lines. And that's what our portion is, is a $2.5 million Jeep loan to fund that waterline extension up that road. Number 60, phase one of courthouse renovations. That project should start very soon and be also be completed in early 2023. And that's to renovate, partially renovate the courthouse, a new roof, new HVAC system, storm windows, fixing the front balcony and the front canopies, various cleaning and repainting. And that's only phase one. Those other phases that are following to renovate the courthouse. Number 69, the last one, renegotiation with the cities regarding lost, the lost original. There's been several meetings with the cities, more meetings are to follow. The 60-day deadline will be August 13 before we get to mediation, non-biding mediation. We hope to have a resolution all done, all finalized well before August 13.
Do you have a date for our next meeting?
No, it's a...
Do you want to come back to it?
Yes, we're going to come back. Right now, the ball is in the city's courts. We're waiting for information from them. You can see the various economic indicators, us loss, that team collections, loss collections over the years, the teach loss collections, the single-family home building permits. Last year, last fiscal year, the county issued 277 single-family building permits in the 12 months, beginning July 1st of last year to this June 30. And beginning this July, we did 12. So 12 in the month of July. Number, on page 13, some of those tidies, you can see the tidies going out annually. A growing community, more rooftops, more people going out their garbage to be collected. Right now, we're at almost 20,000 tons a year. Active water customers keep going up. And on page 15 is a new graph that I added recently. It's Georgia Fund One monthly yields. This is where the county invests all its excess funds, and this is the interest rate the county gets. As you can see, we're on the upward trend, including on higher interest rates for all of the county's excess funds. The graph looks kind of interesting. Again, this document is on the county's website for public review. It's updated at least weekly, so the public can review all the county's projects and the status of all of our projects, at least on a weekly basis. Do you have to answer any questions? The board may have.
Randy, on number 45, the, our radio system, and then I believe that's our radio system, right?
Yes, the now one-one radio system.
All right. Have they come in and they've looked at it, and do we know when we're going to get information back on the radio system? Because I heard that the radio system was down yesterday for some time, and I don't think we need to wait.
Well, TUSA did come on June 27 and 28 to do a full investigation, and their report is due August 8.
All right, so we're talking Monday?
We're going to get the report Monday. We'll look at it, and then it'll be presented by TUSA to the board in a public meeting soon thereafter.
Do you know when they did their report, that they talked to the fire departments and talked to the sheriff's department and all that to see what the issues, the problems were? So that, you know, if we're going to fix it, we need to fix it where we're fixing it correctly?
Yes, the report will have those comments from those public safety agencies. So that report is due August 8. The minute it's entered and accepted, they will bring it to the board, and the TUSA will give a personal presentation of the report and answer questions. For the now one-one system.
Yeah, I was going to say, and I don't know what number it is, but how is the roof coming on the prison? Do we have to replace the roof?
Yes.
I'm not sure what number it is, but...
It's not, as well as projects, it's not out here.
Okay. But we are replacing the roof.
It's...
Or doing what we can to the roof.
It's 99% completed.
Okay. I just know we've been having a lot of rain this way, and we know what the problems we've had with the courthouse roof that's why.
The prison roof is 99% completed. That 1% is a real bear to get.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't think Russell had any comments for that. Okay. We'll take a quick break until 7 o'clock for our next public hearing with the UDC. We'll go with the motion, so we'll just take a quick break. I opened up our first public hearing this evening for the UDC. This is the county's Unified Development Code. It's been developed since early 2020. After many public meetings, public hearings with the planning commission and the board of commissioners, and general discussion, the UDC is ready for final adoption. The final version of the UDC has been posted to the county's website for public review as of June 1 of 2022. During the June 7 of 2022 commission meeting, the board denied the old version of the UDC. On July 20 of 2022, the planning commission held a public hearing regarding the UDC. Based on that public hearing, they are recommending that the board of commissioners approve the UDC as it has been posted to the county's website as of June 1, and with the staff recommendation, excuse me, staff recommended minor revisions as previously submitted. During the August 2 of 2022 commission meeting, the board is to conduct a public hearing regarding the UDC to obtain citizen comments and then consider the adoption. Any citizens who'd like to get up and speak will have that opportunity tonight, and will be limited to a five-minute timeframe. Those five minutes are your five minutes, and your five minutes will not be shared with anyone, and our county manager will be keeping up with our time. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for us tonight on the UDC?
Yes, sir.
Sure, sure, that'd be great. If you want to give us a quick update or rundown, that'd be...
If that's okay, is this my question? I'd like to ask you.
Thank you, okay.
This is Lee Walton with Duid. They've been helping us form this new UDC, which we've been working on for almost 10 years, now over 15 years.
Good evening, gentlemen, commissioners. Representing the community development department, if it's okay, I'd just like to make a few comments, some required perspective in the public hearing to begin the discussion this evening. So as you mentioned, the recommendation for you this evening is from the planning commission, from their meeting on July 20, where they recommended adoption or approval, I should say they recommended approval, of the UDC as presented with condition of the minor revisions and clarifications, as you mentioned. I want to read those proposed minor revisions and clarifications in detail so that everyone in the public hearing has that information as well as the UDC document, which is posted. So I will very quickly go through these. It's less than one page worth of information, and I will provide some clarifying comments with each, and then of course, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have following public comment. In Article II, a simple proposed edit, minor revision to the principal use table would modify to allow volunteer fire department use as allowed in all zoning districts as opposed to special use in all zoning districts. Effectively, this treats the volunteer fire department in the same way as any other department or public agency in the county would be treated by allowing use as opposed to requiring a special use process for a new volunteer fire station in the public health safety agency. So that's the only change proposed to Article II. One change, minor revision is proposed to Article III, Section 337, an edit to revise conditions regarding special event venues, adding an item O, which would read, water for the special event facility shall only be provided by public water source. Wells shall not be utilized to provide water for such facilities unless specifically approved by the Harris County Department. This again, a public health safety related proposal in need to confirm that anything established as a special event facility has adequate fresh potable water to serve special events. Typically, there's a higher demand at any one time or at a event for a special use facility than there is for a typical residence, for example, so important to have a reliable water source. So that's a proposed change. In Article V, Section 501.03, which is entitled Dividing Property Among Immediate Family and Heirs, the proposed edit is to item A, which is the, effectively, the definition of immediate family. The proposal is to change to expand the list for definition of what's qualified as an immediate family member under the definition. And for this one, I'm going to refer back to the current code first. Currently, the definition authorizing dividing property among family and heirs defines immediate family of spouse, children, grandchildren, parents, grandparents, siblings, nieces, and nephews, period. The proposed expansion...
To the year of...
Yes, of course. So again, current and previous and existing regulations define immediate family for purpose of this section of the UDC as consisting spouse, children, grandchildren, parents, grandparents, siblings, nieces, and nephews, period. The proposed revision would define immediate family in a broader sense to include the following. Spouse, child, or descendant of child, or half-blood children are considered equally with full-blood children, so children of any common parent are treated as brothers and sisters to each. Brother or sister, stepbrother or stepsister by blood or half-blood, father or mother, grandparents or grandchildren, stepfather or stepmother, aunts or uncles, nieces and nephews, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, father-in-law, mother-in-law, brother-in-law, or sister-in-law, and adopted family members or foster family members, which are considered equal to those by blood. So as you can tell, the proposed definition expands significantly beyond the existing definition. The proposed definition, as recommended by the county attorney, is consistent with state law definition in other respects. The significance of this, in the scheme of things, why aren't we talking about the definition of family in the Unified Development Code? One of the provisions of the Unified Development Code is to allow a process which is called minor subdivision, which allows an individual to take a parcel of property and subdivide it into smaller parcels without going through a zoning or major subdivision process. It's simply an administrative process requiring approval by the community developer director. Current, and there's a distinction in the code between minor subdivision for commercial purposes, if you will, anyone can perform and sell or give to anyone, and minor subdivision for family purposes, which requires evidence that the subdivided property will be given or sold to a family member, typically, you know, that could be sold, and gives different allowances. In the case of a minor subdivision for immediate family and heirs, the maximum number of lots that can be created at one time is six. In the case of not involved in family or heirs, the maximum number is three. And in the case of dividing property among family and heirs, the minimum lot size is three acres, which is actually reduced from the current standard of five acres, whereas the Unified Development Code for both minor and major subdivision varies according to zoning category from 10 acres in A1 to one acre in R2, depending on what zoning category you're in. So that's the significance of this. It makes more family members eligible under the minor subdivision, family and heirs rights section. And that was a lot. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have.
So, did you, I heard you say something about our attorney. Is all that, he's reviewed these?
Correct. This recommendation of expanded definition of immediate family comes from the attorney's recommendation.
The only one that I have an issue with on this whole list, and I appreciate foster parents and foster families so much in the work that they do and such a need. However, the definition of foster family is when a person is temporarily assigned to an individual, of an individual to a family. It's not a long-term or permanent situation. It is a temporary situation. And so adoption is a permanent situation. When you adopt a child, then that child is as if people blood to your family. However, a foster child assigned to a family is a temporary situation. That child may then go back to a parent or age out in the system. So I don't understand why... So, I don't understand why foster family member would be included in this because that's not a permanent or by blood or assumed as if it were blood equals blood as that definition does as a foster family member.
Is there any other questions, Mr. Walton, right now?
I have one question. You said the minimum lot size of family. And I might have missed heard you because I was trying to write down. Max lot is they can have six lots.
Correct.
And minimum is each lot had to be three acres.
Correct.
What, is that based off the total size of the property the family's trying to sell?
Well, again, it's a...
Because the reason I ask that lot size being three acres is that for residential, all you need is two. So, why are we making family have an extra acre? Unless we're doing it in agriculture, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I think that, you know, for me, these would be a little bit more clarified. If we're doing residential at two, I don't know why we're going to penalize the family if they can do three.
Well, we're not actually doing residential at two. Residential varies according to zoning district.
But outside of subdivisions, you have to have two acres to have a house and residential.
The current standard in this case is five acres. The existing county codes for a family or heir subdivision process is a minimum lot size of five acres. So, the proposal is to reduce that from five to three. And this special process for fam circumvents, if you will, all other zoning processes. Well, and really for any.
For any. And I get the, I understand eggland, but if outside of subdivisions, we're requiring two acres for residential, I don't know why we're requiring one extra for family. But I will say this, a will would circumvent that whole thing anyways. But the question was is that we're doing two everywhere else. Forget subdivisions right now. But we're going to make family do three. I don't see how that's, to me, that doesn't seem to be quite fair. Yes, Brian, since you're a community developer guy?
If you have, the reason it is five acres, that's so you can put an easement on that property. We do not allow easements in the county anymore except under the division to heirs and immediate family. This is 60-foot, ease it. So, if you have to have, right now, we require five acres. So, let's just say you don't have the road furnished, you have to have five acres. Now, that number will go down to three. The difference is, right now, it is five if you're on that easement. If you've got the road furnished, they could still do two. But in the future, if you go to 10 acres, they would still have the option just to do three acres instead of the 10.
But his question is, in residential, I can divide, I can only divide to three? Or I can go to two if I'm on the road?
If you're on the road, you can go to two in residential, yes. Right.
Just want to make sure that's clear.
Brian, yes, I want to go check that out. I'll be here for a little bit.
Yeah, I think that's...
Also, would you like to introduce something to the one I said again?
The last, if I could just complete the last of the proposed minor revisions within Article 11, which is about procedures. There are a couple of minor wording changes. One, Section 1104.05 provides to read, "Instead of the planning commission or board of commissioners, shall consider the planning commission and board of commissioners shall consider." Obviously, very minor change. Section 1105.02, there are three items under the process for open hearings that it's been decided that these are really more appropriate for legal, like judge and jury settings than public hearing settings, specifically that the presiding officer may administer oaths that all parties participating shall introduce only relevant evidence and that all parties participating shall have right to present witnesses and cross-examined witnesses. We don't do this in zoning. So, those provisions, we recommend removing from the open hearings process. And finally, in Section 1107, there's a reference to the former date of adoption of the zoning ordinance, which was 1994. Obviously, that reference will need to be updated to the new date of adoption as proposed. And then, finally, you're also considering for your agenda the alcohol ordinance this evening. Any necessary consistency with definitions in the finally adopted alcohol ordinance would be appropriate in the UDC as well. So, that completes the proposed, and again, as presented to and approved by the Planning Commission, minor revisions to the final draft, the final UDC documents.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if we have a public hearing, this is Brian Williams, Director of Community Development. He's, he'll be popping up every now and then to answer detailed questions. But again, he's the Director of Community Development, and Brian's office will be in charge of enforcing this document, Western Board of Approving. And he was well versed into getting us to where we are today. So, when he jumps up, he has something to say.
All right, this time, if there are any individuals who'd like to make any comments or ask questions, you will have that five-minute timeframe to do so. If you'll just raise your hand, I'll recognize you. And once I do, if you'll just come up to the podium and state your name and address. Yes, ma'am, first hand, I saw it right there. If you'll please step forward to the podium.
I can't hear too much today. Oh, you said voted? Our property is on...
She's disabled.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
But I can't speak louder.
Yes, ma'am.
How about that be great? Oh, I'm asking that, can we be able to grant for the end, some of the people who already have properties? Because some of them, the properties are already deeded out to people in like one acre, two acres, five. And if they want to put something on it, they're going to be stuck with this program. And it's not fair to them because they've been left those one acres and stuff, and they know that they may have to do easements and all that, and they may have enough property for that. But there's not going to be six people or six plots to put on this land in order for them to do all of this. So, there needs to be some type of grant program in program for the folks who are already deeded out property and already wanted to use this property, but they haven't been able to get to it yet.
Yes, ma'am.
So, there needs to be something done about that because just to stick up there and say that they got a half three acres, where they going to get them?
Okay, just third question here again. If there is a piece of property recorded, if it's in the courthouse, and it's a recorded document of your property, recorded plan, it is legal as long as you can meet, you can build on that property as long as you can meet the Health Department requirements for a setic system and the current setbacks, which are 50 feet from the front property line, 35 feet from the rear, and changing sides, which will change to 20 feet on the sides. But that would be it. If I had a half-acre lot anywhere in the county, as long as I can meet the Health Department requirements and setbacks, I'm good. I can build on that property. So, don't confuse with something that you already have. That's not going to go away. So, that's a huge, I've heard, I've had a lot of questions over the past few weeks about this. Now, again, division to immediate family members, it is going to get reduced from five to three. It's going to help. So, if I had 10 acres, instead of just being able to divide it to two people, now I can get at least three people in there. I can get a three, a three and a four-acre lot. That's division to immediate family that you currently divide as you are a lot. Heir policy, that's done by last will and testament. A probated will, once it's gone through the probated process by law, let's just say I had 10 acres. I got 10 kids. I don't, but almost. 10 acres, I got 10 kids. If I leave them an equally divided will for that property to be divided equally amongst them, each one will get an acre, by law, I have to grant that. Another clarification on the division to immediate family members that I don't think was mentioned, it can't be divided up to six, but it can be divided into more than six under immediate family rules. If you have, say you've got 100 acres and you want to divide it up to immediate family members, if it's more than six, it goes to the Planning Commission for approval. But anything six or less, I can do administratively. Is that helping some things here, maybe? Maybe? Okay, let's keep going.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to pick it right off the...
Sure, I think you just placed that, you're not involved in this.
She's pretty much pretty drunk. I can't really be the part of the question. What I was introducing, what I found in the property, it was, I guess you were probably here at the property. It was split up amongst the siblings of my dad. So, my dad had three kids. So, that's very spread. I got a family that has six of us. So, they got split five acres among six people. But you're saying if we have, right, if we go into the property and all of this, that we just deal with whether we have three acres or two acres or one acre? Is that what you're saying?
If it's done, no. If you do division to immediate family member, meaning that I'm currently alive and I want it divided to my kids or any part of my family, then it has, it's going to have to be the minimum three. Right now, it's five. But in the future, that would go to three. In the case, if it's left by a will that I leave my, then that will is probated, then that will would dictate whatever acres they get.
Okay, my ancestors didn't need a will because they're the only ones that can not leave a will. So, when my aunt and uncle got tired of paying all of the taxes, it's bringing it up into the family of their siblings. So, we got five acres, got four of them. It's three of us. But from my understanding, we can't deal because we got two acres or now three.
No, you can build, Kevin. If you have a five-acre lot, you can build.
We don't have a will.
Okay.
It's just our deeds, but our names and acres. So, I'm trying to make it work. If one of us could be able to marry, but you're saying that we can't.
Is the person deceased already?
Yeah, the generation that you...
I think she's saying that there are three of them that are alive, and they got five acres, and all three of them want to build a house, but they can't do it on those five acres because they would need six acres if they cut it up into three two-acre residential lots. But they only have five acres. And then, if we're doing this, we're going to three acres, and that means somebody's going to be odd personnel.
I tried to...
I hope I explained it.
You explain it.
Right, right, and right now, well, right now, you can do two. And if five acres, you can divide it into two, two-and-a-half acre lots, and two of them could get a house, and the other one couldn't. But so, that's what I'm saying. Right now, all three of them could build a house because they'd have to have six. But that's what she's asking. Is this going to affect that? And how could they do that? And the only way that they would be able to do that is if somebody, one of the three of them passed away and said, "We're going to put this in the will that this is divided in three equal spots." So, then they could have three houses.
Under the UDC, there would be one other option, the rezoning environment, but the R2 zoning category under UDC allows one-acre lots in circumstances where the department approval can be gained for what's necessary. So, with rezoning to R2, it would be possible to subdivide into one-acre lots. The rezoning process would be required.
Can I be better, Brian?
Well, that's stated, it's stated in the code, but it's not, each property is treated independently, so you would have to go through a rezoning process of planning commission and board of commissioners.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you're on the easement, correct?
We, I mean, our property is off of 315, and this family property, so house is all where to get in that area. We have a road going down to our property, and we have a road that the exit of 22. Well, we have two entrances.
We need to sit down and look at it on paper.
I'm going to need a body to pull.
You need to get together, look at it. Well, I mean, we've looked at it before, but what we have there is... It's on the easement.
Why does it come to you often?
Just come on, we'll get it.
My name is Jesse Ritchie. So, if one kind of woman here can drive it. Question I have, have five acres, and that easement going to it, but I want to build two houses on it, and two.
And you've got five acres?
Yes.
You won't be able to split it up. And under the current rule, you won't be able to split it up. Under the new rule, you won't be able to split it up because it's going to require three acres. The only way you could do it is leave it as a last will and testament and do it under the heir bond. You do it as a last will and testament to your family. Yes, sir. And that's been around, I don't know how long, five acres has been around months before I ever got here. And we're just trying to improve that situation to let people survive their family amongst their family members, gotten three acres.
They're supposed to be putting in the three.
So, let me ask you this, Brian, based upon his situation. You've got five acres, and right now, we can do two acres residential. What we call these on easement, that's what's not allowing him to do it.
Since 2009, he cut out easements.
If he was on a pay road...
If he was on a pay road, if he was that public right of way, he could divide his into two acres and give to somebody else two acres, yes.
All right, so what's hurting him is he's on an easement, not on a pay road. Not the board in a pay road.
Or any county or state.
Oh, yeah, well, any, yeah, that's what I'm saying. If I say pay road, then I'll say public debt.
And this plan been here all the time?
Yes, sir. As far as I know, it's been around long before I was here. 2009, at least, I know was when they cut out the easements.
Mark Lawrence, 15th Richardson Court, Portson 31808. I stated to, on July 20th, the last month, that I would bring more people with me because of the questions that we have, and we're not being able to get the answers to the questions that's being asked. The gentleman, Mr. Richards, is one of the members of my congregation that I'm allowed to pastor. These courses are coming up, and they haven't had the opportunity through the years to get the information. And now, here we are with this proposed UDC. And my question has been, ever since I've been coming here, Mrs. Aker, that we don't have to do it so fast. I mean, I know that the planning committee wanted, they did what they did. We came here in great number, and it's like, well, thank you for coming, but we already made up our mind. And I just hope tonight that that outcome is different. I hope that we would search ourselves because I heard you a prayer tonight, and it really touched my heart because you said that you want the fruits to be good fruit. One day, all of us is going to die, but Mr. Richards is not rushing death to give it to his children. We have to be very conscious of everything that we do because if we do it in a hurry, we could really make mistakes that we have county attorneys involved in and... And we don't have county attorneys in it on outcome commission. I don't know. I don't know. But why should we have to do things so fast? If we just hold on, the community is here because we have a overflow out there. The community is here because they really want the best answers and they want to get that, that, that courses asked. And I know this is found here, but does it have to happen in a way that this young man or the people over here on this side and the elderly that have property that cannot divide up five acres and give it to three children? They didn't know. Has it been on the books all the time? It was. It was a revision and I had a chance to look over 384 pages, but not everybody. I remember you saying, Mr. Grant, that you didn't understand it yourself and I hope I'm not just putting you on the spot. But I hope that we understand where we are because if we rush to vote like the planning committee had, and I, I mean, I respect them. They were doing their job. We have been in this before and we've, we've been going meet after meet after meet. But does that help these people around the wall right here? All of those that's sitting outside the doors? We want to be a voice for those that can be a voice for themselves and there are so many more that would love to be here, but they can't across the circumstances.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Alzadee Copeland-Greer. Um, I live at 15220 Georgia Highway 18 in Diamond, Georgia. Um, I was also at that meeting of the, uh, planning and zoning committee and I was very disappointed of that overwhelmingly, the people that were there were against what was being proposed. And the only thing that we heard time and time after each person that got up and spoke against was we've been working on this for two years and ironically, that's the first thing that I heard when you opened up the meeting. So I don't think that people are concerned about the time that has been spent researching and preparing this revision to the UDC. People are concerned, I know a lot of the people that are here are concerned about the property that their parents and their grandparents and even in my family, my great grandparents have owned, they have formed and they have supported their families. And we want to be able to continue to grow and develop our families here in Harris County. Harris County is a great county.
Great county.
Unfortunately, when I was here last month and as I'm here tonight, I don't see people that really represent me. I don't feel that people are here representing my best interests, not because of anything other than when we give an opinion, it's an open, a public hearing and there's an outcry to wait, to reconsider. We're told, we've been working on this for two years. The man that, the chairman of that committee, when the public hearing was opened, he refused to chair the meeting. He refused to hear what the people, and I don't know who appointed him to this committee. Those people are appointed by the commissioners. I don't know who appointed him, but he didn't want to hear from us. But I do know who put the commissioners in their positions. And if the commissioners won't hear us in the hearing, they will hear us in the voting booth.
So I hope.
Place hold your comments so we can hear her. Place hold your comments and put us here in this space.
So that pretty much sums up. And, and, and I think that there was more back and forth and we appreciate it. From what you've heard tonight, there's more back and forth with the commissioners and the, the public and also from these gentlemen. Last, last month, it was not that way at all. And we appreciate you all hearing us, but we hope that tonight you will wait and you will reconsider what we are saying and you go back to these gentlemen and say, listen, what about all of these questions that these people have? Because honestly, you know, even though you, you're sending us to go to see Mr. Williams, I'm sorry, Brian, I didn't. Uh, even though they're sending us to see him, we still, there, there are really no guarantees and we know that every situation is gonna be different. I, we're reasonable people. We are reasonable people, but please press the pause button. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's David Adams, um, address 809, that's Highway 27 total. The increase in A1 and A1 does not need to be confused with A1 because Harris County is by the way, I think we should all agree on that. Um, A1 is just a zoning designation. Um, but the increase in lot size from two acres to 10 acres in A1 is a 500% increase. A quick look at the land use map shows that about 80% or more of lands currently A1 zoning, not agricultural zoning, A1 zoning. This is largely investment or air property. This will have an immediate impact on the value of your property and the value to all of your heirs. Just because it is air property, just because property belongs to your family doesn't necessarily mean your family may want to hold that property, that family may want to take the inherent value of that property and sell it, distribute it so everybody can enjoy their wealth, whatever it is, but it limits what you can do with your real property. The decrease in lot size is a plus for developers, means the value of your land is less to you. So once they purchase it and it decreased value, they can rezone it. You may not be able to rezone it. You, you may not know how, it may be cover some process, a consuming process, it may be considered spot zoning, which we can't do. Um, but the value of your air property is directly related to your family's wealth. This is the third time, third time we've been here. It's the third time you've been faced with a room full of no supporters other than a few of you. Uh, the last two meetings, we saw a change in your votes of those of you who do support this once the outcry from your constituents was seen. Uh, these are the same constituents whose voice you're here to represent regardless if you agree with them, regardless if you want them in your district or regardless even if you want to represent them. Uh, these proposed changes further allow a few to henpeck how property owner, property owners manage their own property. It's understood that you might not agree with what someone else wants to do with their property, but it's their business as long as it's not a detriment to the general health and welfare of others. Uh, you said that after many meeting, many meetings and discussions have brought us here tonight, and again, at each of those meetings, you heard zero support other than a few of you. At the last planning and hearing, meeting the chair did recuse himself, um, but it, as he stated, it was because of the hypocrisy of the process, this process so far. And I do have a question for Mr. Williams. Um, under the new UDC, if I do have one of those pieces of air properties, how large would it need to be to put a modular mobile home on? And two, um, the situation of five acres on easement to be divided under the current UDC, is my understanding that that division could take place with variance, but it's also my understanding that variance will not cover a lot size change.
Correct.
So he could divide his property with a variance permit, but with a new UDO, UDC, he could not because that could be a lot size change.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sorry, anyone else?
Yes, sir.
My name's Ben Simpson, L 373, Palmer Street, North of LA. This UDC has been voted out twice by the same committee. Divisions that are causing the most contentions are effectively have changed and all the public hearings, no one has spoken in favor of these zoning requirements. Requirements for A1 zoning property are restrictive and disenfranchised property owners. I'm a home builder. I've built homes for people in this room as I'll feed my children. Rising interest rates and building material costs, market reduces number of people who can afford to build a home in this county. Increasing the cost of property will exacerbate this problem and potentially put us out of business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we have somebody else speak, I think you also asked another question, but I don't think you answered. Uh, David, didn't you ask about the mobile homes?
Yeah.
So I, I think we need that answer because I don't want him to go away, but we can say we did answer.
So currently you can put a mobile home in three locations. You can put it under MHU1, MHU2, both of which are considered mobile home park type situations, or A1. And you can put a mobile home in A1, which currently is two acres. In the future, with the new proposed ordinance, which is being proposed, that will be 10 acres if you were cutting out new property. If you have, if I have two acres down the street that I currently own and it's recorded and planted, I'm good to go and it's in A1, I can put a mobile home there. If I have 10 acres down the road and I want to give my son, or no, I don't want to do a son, I want to give somebody two acres, I can't do it. I'm stuck with my 10, period. So a mobile home, I can go there.
Let me do that, your question. I want to make sure.
Thank you, Brian.
Good evening. I'm Trent Griffin. I live at 1383 Old Charlotte Road. I'm a business owner in this county and also additional acreage of property that I'm a partner of owning. Um, so this is y'all's fault tonight, right? The fact that people, that Brian is called up here to answer people's questions on a night like tonight and we're supposed to be making a final decision and a vote on it. Mr. Bobby, I remember you said it, uh, the first night that it got turned down to UDC and this would have been going back a little over a year ago now, right? That we should have a public meeting and maybe the school where we can hear, we can listen, we can have conversation. Um, as a matter of fact, with planning and zoning, uh, board meeting just a few weeks ago, we had some dialogue for the first time. And, and I know a lot of people that were here for the first time were frustrated with that meeting, but a lot of us left excited because there was dialogue and there was conversation and that led into a parking lot and it was more conversation about what they believed and what we believed. And it gave us all an opportunity to put that out there. And what we're seeing tonight is a lot of people that are frustrated, confused, and quite frankly scared that of what's gonna happen to the value of their property. And that's, that's a fair concern, especially in today. Um, I don't know if y'all know this or not, but we're, we're in a recession, right? To declining orders of GDP growth, that is a recession. I don't know which news channel you watch, but some acknowledge and some aren't, but we are in a recession. And then it was validated tonight, 277 permits in the last 12 months and last month was 12. I can testify to that with my business and me and my partners are sitting down and we're looking at it and I'm the one that's sitting there talking to the people above the door. I'm gauging the progress and I can tell you the next few months, don't expect that number to make a drastic increase. It's just not going to. There's a decline in growth coming to this county whether this UDC goes through or this UDC doesn't go through. It's, it's going to happen and we need to be conscious of it because the construction industry fuels the gas stations and Mexican restaurant and a lot of other businesses. And we're an important part of this community. We need to be recognized for it. I'll get to my notes now because none of that was what I wrote down to say. So, um, basically my opinion of what this is is uncompensated, uncompensated regulatory theft by taking. A 500% increase in agricultural lot size will devastate utility and property. I think you said about 500 acres. Man, if it comes to tomorrow, that's probably worth close to $80,000 because I can go to Mr. Ryan, I can cut it and put two, two plus acre sized homes on there. But if this UDC goes through and that's not in a free zone act residential area, I'm not gonna pay you over 30 grand for that property. So that's just the truth of the way I'm immediately, when we pick up the phone, that's the conversation me and you are gonna have. It's going to cut down on the inherent value of the people's property and that's extremely important because this is generational wealth that is being passed down and it's something we need to protect in this community. Um, look, the problem here is the zoning process. What you're wanting to do is a blanket coverage over the entire county and the issue with that is that it's going to take 70, 80% of the county into consideration. We need to start with a comprehensive plan, which I think is up in, in the next two years or so, and we need to redraw a map. We need to draw a map that is central around city centers and around the areas that the majority of the residential areas are and then build out from there. Have 20 acre minimums for heaven's sake in areas that need it and then have 10 acre minimums and have five acre minimums, have two acre minimums. Take your opinions out of it because when you're not sitting in those seats, someone else is going to be sitting in those seats. And the decisions you make tomorrow to not zone a property and then a month later, whenever you're not in those seats and someone else makes a different decision for someone's neighbor, that's when you get in spot zoning. That's what's gonna lead to lawsuits. I wish the lawyer was here, I think he'd probably agree with that, but that's where we're heading to. We need a real comprehensive plan, a detailed map that lays out where y'all can look at it and you say, this is what you can do and this is what you can't do. And that's not the case. I'll read real quick an excerpt from our current comprehensive plan. Critical to the protection of Harris County's quality of life and continuing to update the land use ordinances, which is what we're working on here tonight, is the process must be clear and easy to navigate by Harris County citizens and investors, right? This should be transparent. You should be able to look at a zoning map, you should be able to read UDC and you should be able to say, this is what I can do with my property and this isn't what I can do with my property, not necessarily what individuals' opinions are. Thank you for your time.
I'm Tyler Finney. I'm here representing Newton Homes. Uh, address is 8219, North Crossing, Core Report Center. As you hear, more arguments against the proposed UDC for the third time, I want you to ask yourself, how can I honor my county, my constituents, and my position at the table? You should do your responsibility to listen to and represent the voters effectively. It is clear from every meeting in this room regarding the UDO, the voters are not behind the proposed changes. I'm not talking about the small percentage of very vocal social media users, some of which are not even residents of Harris County anyway. I'm talking about the residents in this room, residents that have showed up to the meetings, residents that are busy with work and familial obligations, but I trust you to vote in a manner that will effectively, uh, put Harris County towards a positive growth. Out of all the planning and commission meetings, only one person has spoken for the UDO. You and the Harris County community have the energy and passion to create real, effective and lasting change. We have the opportunity to make a difference. The proposed changes are not, they're quite literally a step back. This will force Harris County in the negative, not maybe that's not necessarily negative, but will force Harris County back physically. You guys have seen the study. I've given it to you. I hope you've read it. I'm going to ask you to deny the UDO was written. I want you to ask yourself, are these changes really what's best for Harris County? What do you value? Stagnation, higher individual taxes, uh, and exclusion of families from Harris County what it has to offer? Or do you value smart growth, lower individual taxes, increased services and better access to those services? Let's sit down and comment table, table of welcome to normal, quiet, our working families in Harris County. Where do we start? When do we start? Where do we start? Where do we start? We start tonight. We start tonight by making reasonable decisions. We start by slowing down, having meaningful conversations, and understanding the consequences of tonight's vote. Again, you guys have read my letter. I hope you guys have read the study that K B A put out. Having thought about the unintended consequences of tonight's vote, what it looks like in the future, and what it does to Harris County, there's a perfect time to confide the changes to the U D O. That time is not tonight. Perfect time is when you revamp the comprehensive plan, like was just alluded to. Again, I'm asking you to deny the U D O as written, revisit the adoption when the comprehensive plan is up for you. Thank you.
Any other things that you would like to say?
I'll be quick. My name is Tom Brown, I live on 361 Main Drive, Hamilton. I'm going to talk to you, I guess, I have a nice knowledge. I'm going to try to pay $6,700 in property taxes this year. So I got told I can't live in my camper and my house is being built. I got told it's going to be 30 or 60 days, you know, before my house is being built, I can live on the end. Again, $6,700 a year, I can't live in my camper for a year or two, you know, before my house is being built. My house is being built, and it's built itself.
I've actually put something different into the ordinance. Under the new U D C, you will be allowed to live in a camper or a mobile, or you can live in a mobile home right now, but you have to sell.
I don't want to live in my camper.
You can live in a camper or an R V for a period of 60 to 90 days, and then we'll reassess your situation. And then if your continued, if your building is continuous, we would see about extending that.
I moved in now, we appeared a lot on March.
Can't do it now because the ordinance isn't in place.
Can you make that so that works?
No, sir.
I'm 400 yards off the road.
I understand, I understand completely, but that is not my choice, that is the ordinance.
In Painton?
This is what we're working on.
Well, that's.
But we've worked extended now.
For $6,700 a year, that's sort of ridiculous.
Yeah, I don't set your taxes up.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Next is Williams, Lake Garden Drive. And I live on property in Hamilton, Dallas, Louisiana, for some of my business. And let me bother those first. This is my first time coming to any of the meetings or anything. I'm usually out of the country, protecting our country against any foreign domestic assault or situation. So I'm here now, and like you said, you guys worked on this two years. And that's not a long time at all, two years is not a long time. We need to make it really, really clear who has benefited from this. Let everybody really know who benefits from this and how they benefit. And if none of these people benefit from it, we need to make that crystal clear to everybody. And if y'all let them know how. I think one gentleman over here, he said something, we need complete transparency. We need to get, if there's an urgency, if we don't get it done now, who loses? What are that, who's benefiting? And if they're benefiting, what are they losing if we wait? We need to know that. Because it seems like if there's no transparency, why, you know, what's going on? So we need complete transparency. We need to let everybody know who's benefiting, why they're benefiting. And then we need to make sure that we all benefit from it. It's a win-win all the way around. It has to be, we have to work at it some kind of way. And also, we want as much property as we can get, we need to make this crystal clear because we want generational wealth. We want to be able to own property and pass it out, and we don't want to sell. We want to hold on to it and develop it and keep it in our families so we can create wealth that generations and generations break a whole bunch of generational persons. That's, that's part of our goal. So we need to know, you guys need to help us to do that and make it as simple as possible for us to do it. This other gentleman got up here, I need him to know exactly what he's doing, and he's going to know his property and how he can manage it. It needs to be crystal clear for him. My son's over there, he's only 17. He needs to know how to do it. I need everybody to know on the simplest level how to do this, make it as simple as possible for everybody, please. We don't need to be hard and all taken, no, make it simple. Do town hall meetings, do whatever we got to do before we pass this to make sure everybody's on the same tune of music. So when we say no, it's a unified no, we play no. You guys understand why we say no, because it doesn't benefit us. And then whoever it is benefiting, we need to know that too. So please make that crystal clear so that we can make great informed decisions and it won't be the others' confusion. Reason why people are in confusion, this is confusion. So I hope what's confusing wasn't, and we don't want that. We want crystal clarity. Make it as simple as possible, other than education, understanding. And then we move forward. And we move forward unified, where there's a win-win situation. So that's all I can say. Thank you.
Sorry, anyone else to make some comments to say?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ron Gray, and I live at 282 Mountain Creek Drive in Hamilton. Coach Grant, thank you for asking him to answer that question because the gentleman that I did ask the question and the question wasn't answered, so I won't make you intentionally do that, but thank you for bringing that up. And Dr. Andrews, hi, thank you. This is my first grade teacher. Anyway.
Thank you. You did make both of us feel really, really good.
Well, so I don't want to be repetitive, but sometimes that's what is needed. I was here at the last meeting also, and a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. The, the planning commissioners, whoever these people were last time, said, we posted the information on the website. And I said, look around. The people that are here probably live in rural areas and do not have internet access. That's not fair to say, well, we posted it on the website, what if people don't use the internet? What if they don't have the internet in their area where they live? There has to be a better way to communicate what is going on in this community besides just posting on the website. People don't look at it all the time. People don't have access. So we have to come up with a different way to make sure that everybody is notified and everybody knows what's going on. And as opposed to the answer, well, we posted it on the internet. That's not fair. If you look, everybody don't have access to the internet. And we have to do a better job as this department or this group of individuals, we have to get the word out so that everybody knows what's going on. The other thing that was mentioned last time was, is everybody that was here kept saying, oh, it's very complex, it's very, very complex. We had a hard time understanding. Well, again, if they had a hard time understanding, and maybe you guys had a hard time understanding, and it sounds like you did, because sometimes the questions that were asked, you kind of stumble on some of the answers or you don't give us all the answers. But if the situation is very complex, how do you think we feel? Because we don't know. So I feel that you should take the time to educate, educate on all levels so that everybody will know what is happening, what is going on. And again, I hate to be repetitive, but we've already said, and you opened, with the first time it was posted on the website, it was June 1st of 2022, and you guys have been working on it since 2020. Well, that's a little bit of time for you guys to get acclimated with the process, but we, we didn't have that time. We need at least some more time to be educated on the processes for someone other than just Mr. Williams here to answer the questions in this, in this forum. We need answers to the questions that we have. So I'm asking, again, if we could postpone or just further educate everyone so we'll have a clear view as to what's going on and how we can protect the property that was given to us, the property that we purchased, the property that we take care of, is our property. So we want to make the decision on what we would like to do with something that belongs to us. It's just fair. Just a fair question. Can we, can we wait? He asked, Councilor asked, what's the rush? Is there no rush? Can we not come together in a different setting, maybe answer some questions, create? We have the Harris County community, so we have different places where we can meet to have questions for those who couldn't come at this hour. Maybe they can come during the day and they can't come at this hour in the evening. But we need to be fair for everyone. So is there any, I would say, is there any possibility that we could postpone this and not make a rush decision so that everybody can get a flesh of cancer? And maybe just educate us on what we don't know?
My name is Sean Bryan, I live at 224 Wood Avenue Drive, Pataula, Georgia. And I just want to ask a question. Who decided, well, first of all, if I'm going to buy a house in the future, do I have to buy 10 acres a year? No. Okay. All right. So the ordinance, the ordinance that came up about, who decided on the final details of what happened on those ordinances? Who came up with the conclusion?
Then the job of this board on the dark, so we got that. And a lot of input over all of our, we had multiple input from during our public hearings that we tried to take into consideration while forming these codes.
Okay, so you all who made the decision?
Part of that decision.
Okay. Now, how did you come up with the decision that y'all made?
Over many, many long evenings of discussions.
All right. Those long evenings of discussions should have been made by the people that's here.
And.
And we all should have decided instead of you all. I mean, it should have.
And it has been many times along the way. I'm sorry you were not able to attend those earlier. I wish you had to.
Well, a lot of people here were confused about it and everything, and these gentlemen over here, they said, they just made a point or something. They said, if you could just write out everything and put it where everybody can understand, and then it won't be so much confusion. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rita Copeland, 622 Field Drive, Pataula. And the points that I want to make here are probably threefold. One, I, everybody's already said that the meetings haven't been so public, and I think part of the name of the ordinance is unified, and I, and I'm not sure how you came up with unity if the community is not in support of it. I know for me, if I look back in history, Harris County, I grew up here, I went to school here, I, I moved away and was afforded opportunities to come back here to stay and live, and I love being here. I love the county. And a lot of people that reside here are not afforded the same opportunities. If, if the ordinance passes for me, I can afford about 10 acres if I want to build a house. But the person that cleans my house has the same rights to be here in Harris County as the, as the person that services my kids as their, as their pediatric dentist. They both reside in Harris County, and they're, and they both have the same rights to be here. It's part of the community. And I feel like when the pastor got up here earlier, if we say, my people are not being represented, my people are the, are the people that I care about. My people are the cleaning lady that I have, she's a white older lady. The dentist for my kids, he's Latino. Those are my people. My family, my people. I feel like my people in my community are not being represented. And this is not Congress. It shouldn't be all or nothing. It sounds like there's some really good points being brought up by the ordinance that we could really find helpful. But then you're not going to piece me away. You want everything to go through or nothing. Is that fair? Harris County in the 1800s was an area populated by a lot of indigenous people. And those people, by federal mandate, were relocated past Mississippi out west. Is this a new age version of getting rid of the old, out was the old and in was the new? I don't get, I don't get the purpose. And I don't think the community gets the purpose. So I just want to appeal to you guys to reconsider what the community is asking for. That's all.
My name is Larry Holloway. I'm 315, Department of Defense. You know, it's very important, people ask me that, I live in the military. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. I'm kind of like, oh, is this the thanks that I get? I don't see how it's gonna be. I went out and fought for my country. I didn't have to fight for nothin', I ain't been in war, but I'm saying, I gave time, I served for my country. Now, I want my country to help me, help me, hurt me. That's honestly, show me some evidence. This the way I want to represent? People that serve in the military that come home to me? Don't see it. It's only going to help a few. But honestly, too many people in this room, they're going to help. Children are going to help me. Down, sitting there. Thank you for my service. Say no to this.
My name's Taylor Irvin. I live 220 Wood Avenue, Pataula, Georgia. Just wanted to rally back to one thing. With public hearings, we have had several, and the frustrating thing I have is I feel like we've not voted it in on those nights, and then we go back and we don't address the main problems in the elephant room of those nights that were discussed and a large portion of it. We've done minor tweaks, edits, but we have not addressed the problems that the people have come here and expressed. I do feel like driveways have also become under attack, and I do believe applying that county road is access to the county and to your land. And I think that that cannot be overstated. I mean, driveways are, are a gift of freedom. Truly, truly are. But let's just look at an example. You have 90 acres, we divided it into four lots. That's 22.5 acres a lot. Under what y'all are proposing, that allows two driveways off the county road. Now we're going to pave a subdivision to access two 22.5 acre lots. I just want to just let that sink in, 22.5 acres. And that could be, oh, that's a problem. Well, that's a problem. It's a big problem. Doesn't mean there are good things in here, because y'all have worked very hard on this. And there are a lot of really good changes, and the correction in some land areas do need to be made. There is. That is my opinion. But I do not believe that it is as large of a blanket that we're putting. I'm not going to stand up here and reiterate a lot of what was said, because a lot of things that I was planning on talking about have already been said. But I do believe the zoning map is a huge, huge problem with what we are looking at with the largest change in land use in Harris County's history. Not, not a minor change or tweak, but the largest change in the history of Harris County land use. And I, I don't, I don't believe that we should drive down this road without correcting that problem with the map. And, and I do have a question that this was a thought when I was listening to people's comments, and this might be a little deep back. When we were talking about grandfather lots and, and the width. So I'm just curious, I don't know and I don't have any course in this race, but if there is a two acre lot that was laid out with lots set backs at 10 or 12 foot, and now it has to be 25, and it can no longer meet those standards... and now it has to be 25 and it can no longer meet those standards, would that still be grandfathered?
If the new, the new ordinance states, decide, because the only thing that's going to change will be the side setbacks to 20 foot center.
Correct.
If the property is already there and it doesn't meet anything, but it's already platted and recorded as currently, you're still going to have to meet those 20 foot setbacks, yes?
Correct. Okay, so that would be an unusual piece at that point. It's based off of previous, but we don't have a provision for grandchildren.
Well, it's a variance provision.
It would be a variance. It would then have to go through a process of variance. And the same thing with the driveway, right? Like if you had a, just given yourself feet to put, changed it to a new setback for widths for driveways, that would also be, have, we have to go through a variance to get that for someone if they had that.
Not sure about that.
No, because you're, I mean, if your block, your property's already recorded as it is now, all you have to do.
Okay, I was just curious to like step back, it's all in the same thing when you look at it.
If I have feet to feet of road footage now?
Yeah.
And in the future, if this passes?
Yes.
Then I still got feet to feet of road footage, I'm good.
Okay, so that it wouldn't apply?
But if my, if my block width is only, if, of course, we got a minimum block width now of 90 feet at the building line?
Yeah.
That's, you're still taking 20 and 20, you still got feet to feet to build right in the middle.
Okay, um, just wanted to get clarity on that because that question I thought came up. I did feel like there was, there is a problem there with that, you have to go through a process of variance to obtain that on those small blocks and to build off of the previous. I was just curious that whole process. I do, I can't reiterate it enough on my time, the zoning map issue. Because that, I do believe is a core problem in this whole giant change. Thank y'all, thank you for your work and effort. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leigh Hardaway and I am residing at 616 Cannon Road, Horson, Georgia. My mother lives there and I'm there with her now. Also, my brother and I share property and I'll give you the parcel numbers. And my question will be related to that. It is already divided up and it's air property, it was left by my father to us and it's only 1.5 acres for each person, which if you combine it, that would be relatively about four acres. Partial ID is 030095 and 030095, A like apple. So, I was under the impression, I didn't come to the last meetings, I wasn't, um, I wasn't informed that, I got some alerts saying, oh no, you can't build a house unless you have 10 acres of land if you want to build a single family house. So whether you have two acres or you have one acre, you can't build a house in Harris County, the new UDC will say that you have to have 10. So that was very confusing. And again, I haven't been informed, I haven't even lived here and moved back to take care of my mother. So there are a lot of people I know graduated in my class who have air property and also family members. My grandfather and my mother had 10 kids and they gave each kid two acres of land or more. So that means that my cousins now have only two acres of land. The question becomes, are we able to build homes on it or give it to our children or grandchildren for inheritance? And the next question will be, what type of value would that property hold? So question, and I have a couple of questions before I make the final statement because I don't want to walk away from this setting and I promise that I'm going to come myself to get the information and not get it third hand. And I'm glad I did because you cleared up a lot of concerns that I had. My question is, if I have four acres of land, like my brother and I now have together, can we build? And if we can't because of the five acre, whatever it is, what would that person do with the extra land that you can't use?
You said there are two recorded flats already, there are acre and a half apiece.
Yes.
You can build on those current acre and a half because they're already reported and platted. This will not affect you in, in any case. And all you have to do is meet the health department requirements for the system?
Okay.
And the setbacks, the current setbacks.
Alright, so in the case then, there's a family that does not have it recorded and they have four acres of land. What happens when, do people want to build on that property?
With the current ordinance, you can still divide it up under, you could divide it into two two acre lots.
Okay.
With the current ordinance. Your future ordinance, if it is zoned A1, that will not be the case. Your four acres will be stuck as four acres.
You'd have to pursue rezoning is one option.
Pursue rezoning and would that get a cost?
It would get a cost of $100, just maybe.
Of $100 for that new people?
And this takes about two months of a process. You go for a planning commission, board, and you come before the board to make sure they rezonate.
But if it's left in a will?
In a condition, it's a lot.
It will be.
It's a will to air.
If it's left in a will.
But the living, these are, this is not, I mean, these are people who actually, they actually own the property and they want to build on it, then they will have to come to you for consideration on it. So that's one option, what would be the second option?
Well, again, if it's already, well, if it's not divided?
Right.
There's nothing you can do. I mean, and you would, you would literally have to go through the rezoning process to divide it, to get it rezoned to R1. I don't know what that does to your taxes, I'm not a tax person, I just wanted to make that clear.
Right.
But you, if, it would be up to the board, if you, if they accepted that R1 zone, pull for it. And then you can divide it into two two acre lots.
And if they didn't, you're just kind of stuck?
If they didn't, you're stuck as a single, as a single buildable.
Fair, just a tax. Okay, I, I wanted to get clarity there because questions were coming to me and I was like, I don't know, but to be fair, I have to go myself and ask the questions. Question number three, was there some type of feasibility study that was done for this area or any other types of monitoring studies that you can share with us as to why or how your decisions were made?
So the comprehensive plan is really the base planning study that relates to?
Is it, is it available to, to us? Okay, and how do we get a copy of that? It's online? Okay, and it's called a comprehensive plan?
2019 Comprehensive Planning Study.
Okay, okay, okay. So, uh, I want to thank you for, you know, being honest and open, um, providing information and clearing, clearing up a lot of confusion as far as I heard. As a landowner, I want to say either consider pausing and making the information available to the public as landowners as we are. There's more people than just the people that are here and there are more people who are alarmed and very upset because they do not understand what's going on. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening?
My name is Charles Copeland, I reside at 2779 Towne Lake Road, this West Point. I want to revisit, uh, the elephant in the room, uh, and that is, uh, why? Was the 10 acres put in the amendment for having a modular home? You have to pay a 10 acre for a modular home. A lot of the people that go over to modular home, they can't afford a house. Yeah, and can't, you know, that's the reason they go over to modular home and why should they be required to have 10 acres of land? And that shouldn't, shouldn't even been, been in the amendment unless there, there was another reason to put it in there. Can anyone answer that question?
I can't tell you the reason of the building there, but I can tell you that I've been against it since we started this process two years ago.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Lady Dawson, 1265 O Street, but I want to change gears. Did I hear you say that a special events facility was meant to be on public water?
I'm glad Sid was permitted to be okay.
Correct. This is something coming from the, the health department itself.
Okay, I agree with that and I'll tell you why. Think about, first of all, there's not a lot of public water in this county, not a lot at all. We don't have a lot and we have a lot of things like historic homes, old closed churches, things like that, that we have entrepreneurs who would like to be, who would like to make these into big events facilities. Well, if they're going to say, no, you can't do that because you're not on public water, well, that's going to be us saying, the county of no is alive and well in this county like it has been for so many years. So we don't need to be telling entrepreneurs, no, we need more small businesses in this county. And for the most things that are going to be held in old historic homes and closed churches, they're not going to be the massive events, they're going to be small intimate events like what is held in these places now. So, I'm going to be with having on public water.
Brian, did you say that's the health department?
The health department came to us and recommended that because they just ran into a situation not long ago where the board did approve a special event facility on private walk on the private well and they were having problems with that way. So this is only coming from the health department.
Well, then maybe it ought to be a case by case, but I still don't think it ought to be that we say that it's not a real.
And, and we could easily say, okay, if we want to knock that out and not require to have public water at that spot, but that's not saying if the board approves for that special event facility, the health department can still deny them any kind of license to do something.
Well, I understand that often, but, but we shouldn't make it a requirement here.
And that is one of the things on the note tonight, so we could modify that.
As long as I've been coming to these meetings, it's been for 100 years, we've always been the county that we don't typically let anyone.
Anyone else who'd like to speak this evening, Brian? Anyone else?
The question I asked really, who benefits from this? That's to make it, we get that.
I don't, here, here, like, they just, we're supposed to get, uh, the yard grow, so.
Who benefits from it? Because if everybody here, I'm not going to say anybody really benefits from it. So if y'all can make it clear to us tonight or soon in the future, and like, like you said, you, because in disagreement with the modular home, which is, you know, like trying to push everybody out because of modular homes, you know, or whatever, but make it clear to who benefits. And if you do do it, what are that, that group of individuals that benefit, what are they missing out? What are they losing? Because if that's, if that's the only loss, we can postpone it and throw it out, but we need to know who benefits. Because if nobody here who's benefiting, who is benefiting? We need to know that and how they're benefiting and can we come to a win-win on this situation? Because right now, with all the confusion, I don't see a win-win and I don't see us benefiting.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening? This will be your last opportunity to speak this evening, and this fellow here. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kevin, I live at 121 Harris Drive. And what I'm here, we've worked and got this land and y'all going to come along and tell us what we can't put on the land, we can't deal on the land, that's what I'm here.
I don't make no proof.
Like, this is where we own the land and y'all, like, y'all just saying, y'all owners because y'all going to tell us what to do with our property? You know, who's putting up the book, can't, can't do it all on property? That's what I'm here. Any answers?
Kimberly Whitaker, 354 Georgia Highway 315, Fort Smith, Georgia, 31808. And I've been working with Williams and the planning board because I was in charge of dividing my family property and it's still, um, waiting to be recorded in Ms. Janice Mallory's, um, office right now. I was upset in 2018 because at that time I had to come before the planning committee to ask and to get special permission to divide my family property among six siblings. And it was two acre, two acres apiece would have been perfect and everybody got the two acres, but I had to ask for that. And it was land that my grandfather, who could read and write, purchased, paid taxes on. And it serves me to no end that we have to ask permission to do anything with property that has been in our family for decades. For somebody else to come in here, most of the people on the planning committee, I don't even believe they are from here. I know Brian Williams was and I know Tommy Richardson was, but these other three? Uh-uh, I wanted to ask them what elementary school they went to.
I went to the shallow elementary school. My family had been in this county since about 1840, 1790 and all of y'all people, and I say that because y'all my people, you county folks, everything that y'all are saying, I honestly have been saying the same things. I appreciate y'all coming to say the same thing that I've been saying all along. I am a longtime resident of this county and I'm about seven generations in this county.
I've got three generations.
So, so.
Hey, damn, you know I know you. And to tell you the truth, Mr. Zerner, your mother, you were in her belly when I was in the Chevy grave. So I'm just saying, we need to, uh, just actually, you need to leave us alone and let us do what we need to do with our own property. If it's not a health department concern, if it's not a concern or an infringement or anything else, bug off.
Is there anybody else who's not spoken tonight for the first time? Yes, sir.
George Clark, 12 miles wide, Georgia Highway 131, Georgia. I disagree with a few items in this. For some reason, I got lost in this. For some reason, I got lost in this thing and never didn't know about all the processes going on for two years. How many of these people in here was like me, didn't, didn't know about the meetings where you could come and have a company? Anybody, and if there was, I don't want to, they didn't get laid. Nothing, I would like to see the people, and I know you're not gonna do it. Start coming to these meetings, because if you don't, you're not gonna know what's gonna hap, what's happening. You have got a tax situation going on right now that's worse than this right here. It's not worse. That's all I'm gonna say.
Is there anyone else who's not spoken this evening? We probably have time for more, if you have a quick comment, sir.
That was Martha Fames, two four seven.
Of course, last night.
Annie.
Annie.
Yes, and I want to know, Dexter asked a question, who benefit from this? We haven't gotten an answer to that. I want to know the answer.
I want to know the answer when I speak.
Who is it helping?
I'll be glad to ask you when I speak. For this one term's speech.
Thank you. Yes, sir, one last quick comment.
I have an article on YouTube called, "Why It's So Expensive to Deal in the U.S.?" And I want everybody to look at that article on YouTube. Why it's so expensive? Everybody got their phones, whatever. It is plenty of stuff going on here. Uh, this is happening all over the United States. Why it's so expensive to deal in the U.S.? Y'all look that up, and you'll know what's going on.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment this evening? There isn't.
Addisburg, two six nine, Bug Roads. Um, and it could have been addressed already. Could I butt purchase four acres? Am, am I just allowed to do that?
Under the current, oh, yes.
And if it's already the vote for it, and you vote on it, would I be able to?
If it's existing? If it's a made one, then the answer would be no.
Unless it's existing, it's four acres now.
Unless it's existing, it's four acres now.
Perfect, build a house.
If there is a four acre lot for sale.
You can buy.
You can buy.
Yeah, no questions asked.
Or less than four.
Or they're.
Agricultural forestry.
Property is grandfathered in, air property, four acres next door. I've got two acres. I want to purchase my neighbor's two acres in the road they wanted in these zones. Can I combine them?
Yes.
I can combine, I can make a new lot. I can make a new lot whose aggregate could be less than ten. An acre one zoning. Because currently, that is non-the interpretation.
That's, that's your exact right.
Right, so if we had air property, and let's say, two of you want to sell, three of you want to sell, the rest don't. If those of you who want to sell it, if combined, that property doesn't equal ten acres, it can't be replaced and sold. And you can't purchase ten feet of your neighbor's property if you want that hedge road, or you want that corner of the yard that y'all always talked about. If the balance of what you.
You can definitely speak to us.
If the balance of what you own is not ten acres or greater at that point, or if your neighbor would dip below ten acres, you can't do that.
What he's talking about is more than this, and that has nothing to do with.
The Brian covered Mike.
What David's talking about, and, and he had, we've gone through many scenarios of conversation from this. Um, trying to pick out what would happen if this, and, and I see where he's going. So, if I have four acres.
Do it under the current code and then do another.
All right, I'm gonna give you, that's a good, you're ready to do it. Current, under the current ordinance, I have four acres. I want to sell two acres to a buddy of mine. Well, I can't. In the new ordinance, I will be able to do nothing with that four acres. I will not even be able to divide it to immediate family members because it requires three acres.
If it's zone agricultural.
If it's zone agriculture, correct, thank you for pointing that out.
He said A one.
Agricultural is A one. Agricultural forestry is A one. R one, the minimum's gonna sit right, and, and here's how this whole thing got to where it is. And I'm gonna go ahead and throw my bucket in this because I agree with that man right there. I agree with Grant from day one. So, if you. Uh, so you have R one zoning, which is two acre minimum, right now. A one zoning, which is two acre minimum, right now. And you have RR, which is rural residential, is a five acre minimum. Now, we have very little of that, but what that allows you, RR allows you to do farming and have the animals that you want to in a residential area, basically. R one is where you see most of your subdivision, that's gonna be R one zoning. But in A one, what they wanted to do was to make a different category for A one. Instead of it being the same as the two acres that's currently there, they wanted to make it a different category, you make it ten acres. They wanted to give it a new classification. It was not to make anybody happy, it was just to give a new classification for ten acres. And that would become a, that would be where if you wanted, again, if you have any property out there that's currently recorded and planted, all you have to do to build on it is to meet the current setbacks and meet the Health Department guidelines for the set system.
Brian, I'm spending time down in the model room on the set system.
Mm-hmm.
So, everybody can afford it. That's right.
But, but the set system has nothing to do with what we're doing here. Nothing, that is all state-driven. Health Department has nothing to do, not even my part. It has nothing to do with anything that the ordinance is put in place or anything that I do. It has everything to do with what you have in the Health Department and what they require, and that's state guidelines. Those aren't even local guidelines.
They have water for the water. I grew a herd because I'm right down the street from them. So, I want to be on that list for them.
Okay. And again, that came from the Health Department. That was something that came up from them. That was a concern that they had. Because they did run across a special event facility that had been permitted, and now they're having restrictions on that place because of what, they don't have the proper well.
Can we take water out there?
That's not my call. He said that here. That's the kid.
I mean, we should spend money in the community, we need water out there.
Yes, sir. Just wait, before you do, is, are we doing a public hearing? Because I need to, are you doing it with the public here, or you wanna do it when we get rid of?
I just scared, I didn't know if anybody else wanted to speak, that's what we had. Yeah, that's all I was saying, I didn't want to cut somebody.
Is there anyone else out there who would like to make a comment, leaving into the first round? If not had that opportunity yet. If there's no one else, we'll close the public hearing, and now the board will take it.
There you go.
Make our comments, and that's it.
Thank you. Um, I agree with Commissioner Brian, and I agree with Brian. My sticking point with this entire UDC from when it was first recommended is the ten acre minimum in agriculture. I feel that that is beneficial to a large cross-section of the citizens and land in this county. Um, I think, I have felt, and I have made this known to all of our commissioners, we've had discussion after discussion after discussion, and I have made my comments known. I am not in favor of ten acres for a mobile home. I think that if this is passed tonight, if this UDC goes into effect with the ten acres, the ten acre minimum in A one, and the ten acre minimum for a mobile home, that we basically are shutting out certain landlords, certain potential residents in this county. I'm not for that, folks. I want anybody who wants to live in Harris County to have the opportunity and the chance to do something. I don't think this will provide that. And Brian mentioned, he, I believe you were asked a question about the cost. I was at the last planning commission, in fact, I've been, I almost say the planning commission in almost twelve years meeting. And at the last planning commission, it was never mentioned that, that there would be a cost to rezone the property. They kept saying, "You can always come and rezone your property." But not once did they tell anyone that there's a cost involved. They made it, and they made, and some of you were there, some of you were sitting right next to me. And they, they never, they made, the perception I've had, and the people I've talked to that were at the planning commission meeting is, "Oh, just come on down and get your property rezoned." It's not that simple. Uh, the other thing, Brian, it's a four hundred dollar application fee. Plus, you have to have a survey, am I not correct? And I have no idea what a survey costs, I know what it costs thirty years ago without.
People, people, please, please hold your comments until later.
Well, I was in real estate, it was about five hundred dollars, and I'm sure you can't get one for that now. So, there's the two costs that you will have to. The thing that really bothers me, they say, "Come get your land rezoned." You can get it rezoned. That decision is taken out of your hands and put in the five, hands of the five people who are sitting here. If they decide to turn down your application for rezoning, guess what? You're done. That's what bothers me. This is America, and if we go down that road, where five people can make a decision on whether or not you can sell your land or divide your land, this county's headed down a bad road. And that's my opinion. The others have other opinions, and they have rights, people. That's my opinion. I see every day in, in the United States that our rights are being taken away. And you might not believe that, but I believe that. And I think that for five people, and the property owners don't want up, they want to sit up here and tell somebody, "You can sell your land if I rezon it for you." What's wrong? This is dead. And I, you know, I've said that from the beginning, just like Mr. Brian. He and I both have said that we're against the ten acres. That's my sticking point. You are taking away the inherent right of the property owner to dispose of their land. I don't like that. Yes, I don't like that.
Comments, no?
I do.
I do.
I'm sorry, Anna.
I appreciate those of you who've come tonight. Um, I know many of you are a very long time, and I appreciate your coming. Um, I'm third generation Harris Countyan. I served thirty-seven years in the school district here. Many of you know me as your teacher, and your principal, and your superintendent, and your neighbor, your friend. And I appreciate you coming here tonight. We have been working on this, and I'm gonna say it again, for two years. We've had public hearings in the morning, we've had public hearings in the afternoon, we've had public hearings in the evening, we even had an all-day public hearing at the community center. And I understand that you didn't, um, get the message, so to speak, about what we were working on. Uh, it has been on the website many, many times, and in the Harris County Journal. We are at a disadvantage in Harris County in that those are our two media outlets, the Harris County Journal, which only about twelve percent of the Harris County subscribes to that newspaper. So, I would always encourage you, please get a Harris County Journal, they're not very expensive, and that does help keep up with what's going on here if you don't have the internet. And these meetings have been on the internet over and over, over and over again. But nonetheless, you're here tonight, and we hear what you're saying, that you didn't know about this process. We have had zoning in Harris County for decades. Um, when I was a very young girl, I remember the discussions when we first got zoning in Harris County, and how angry many of the people were about it. And I can tell you the names of the men, and some of you will know them. Sandy Rames, Danny Raymond Rames, Mr. Grant from Catal, that many of you know him for years. They were the first group of commissioners to determine that we needed zoning in Harris County to protect property values and to move our county to the next level of, um, of having a good land use program. And they implemented that. So, the comment that this is the largest change in the history of Harris County land use, I have to disagree with that because I remember the very first zoning. So, what is zoning? Zoning is restrictions by the government on how you use your property. So, I hear what Commissioner Langston says about, um, five people up here telling you how to do that. We've been doing that forever, that's what zoning is, that's what any kind of zoning is. It's, is telling you how to use your land, and how we in Harris County think you should use your land. We're not just five people sitting up here, we're five people who were voted in by the voters of Harris County. I don't come up here and tell you just exactly what Susan Andrews thinks because I have people I'm listening to, my constituents that are talking to me. Ms. Copeland, as you did on the Board of Education, you didn't sit up there and say, "I'm Lady Copeland." You sat up there representing your constituents and voting. Many times, I recall, you bringing to the table your, what your constituents' concerns were. So, we're not just five individuals that sit up here and make rules and regulations for all the people in Harris County without the input of the citizens, which is why we had all of these public hearings. We don't just have public hearings for this process. As many as you know, we have public hearings for rezonings. And so, you say, "Well, there's nobody here that's spoken for this." Well, let me tell you that we had a public hearing, and I don't remember exactly, it was maybe a year and a half ago, where we had nine hundred people. We had to move it to Harris County High School Auditorium. And on that evening, we sat there until about midnight, listening to person after person, citizen after citizen, who stood up and said, "We are sick of all of this dense development." And we know in Harris County that we consider two acres dense development, although the rest of the world may not. We're sick of it, we're tired of it, we're tired of the traffic, we're tired of building up our schools, we're tired of building up our roads, we can't get on the highway, we moved here for the peace and quiet, we don't want all of this development." And nine hundred people came that night. And we've had many, many other public hearings on different developments where we have heard, for many more than you here tonight, tell us that they want to maintain the rural nature of Harris County, that they didn't move out here for us to look like Columbus, Georgia, and they want us to maintain that rural feeling. So, we completed our comprehensive plan in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, excuse me. And from that, we said, "Okay, now that we have this comprehensive plan, let's update our Unified Development Code to match that plan." And so, we had a meeting here one night where we looked at that map, and we worked on that map, and we had citizens here saying, "No, move that, um, line where you're going to protect the green space here, move it here, move it here," and we did. Now, is it a perfect document? No, is that map a perfect document? No, did we talk about having the density around the cities and then getting more and more estate-sized lots as you move out? Yes, we had that conversation. But, um, the gentleman who said, "Harris County's not agriculture, I beg to differ. We have farm, we have cows, we have goats, we have pigs, we have chickens." Yes, Harris County does have agriculture. I bet many of you in this room have gardens, and in your ag land, you have goats, and you have cows, and you have, you shake your head, "No, I've been here all my life," I know, you're new here, so, um, you shake your head, that's okay. you're new here, so, uh, you shake your head, that's okay. I just agree with you, you just agree with me, no, not for me. And so, um, we are, we are an ag community. And we're rapidly changing, as we have been for the last 30 years, to a bedroom community of Columbus. And many of us don't specifically or particularly like that. But the public hearings have been held, and we have worked through this process, and we hear you. But I didn't hear you tell me tonight what you are for. I heard you talk to me about, I don't like it, but I didn't hear, well, I'd rather have, or I wish you'd consider, or I prefer this to that. The reason we went to the 10 acres was to try to protect that ag land, to, to protect it, and to keep it from being chopped up into two-acre lots, and for people to get it rezoned into residential, so that it would go through the subdivision ordinances that we have. So there was some reasoning and thinking behind it, it wasn't just, oh, let's do this to punish people. But zoning, you have zoning right now. And going from five acres to three acres would assist the gentleman in the back, so there are some really good things in here. And there are some things that we're not all going to agree on. But I just wanted to say that, um, I'm sorry that you were late hearing about it. And I, you know, I don't know what to do about that other than postpone it, continue to talk about it, continue to work on it. We did have public hearings. But I'm not saying that's what the purpose is to do, but I'm just saying that, you know, we, you gotta bring us some, well, I prefer, instead of just I'm against. Because we're gonna have zoning, we've had zoning for decades and decades and decades. We're going to have zoning. So my thing is get engaged in the process, and I'm sorry that you weren't engaged early. But, um, you know, we have, and I say it again, been working on this for two years, and having public hearings and hearing people. So, um, that's what I wanted to say tonight, there's some really good things in this document, and there are some things we're gonna disagree on. It is a living document, it can be amended, it can be worked on, um, but here we are tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, I would like to say that I have been against the 10 acres since day one because of the heirs, the family, the generational, I've always been against it. I understand what we're trying to do, and I applaud what Lee Walton has done, but there is a lot of good stuff in this document that we didn't have before. So I do applaud the way we've worked at it. But I've been against that part, because I didn't, I personally didn't understand why we were trying to do that to the landowners. You know, every time I brought that up, I got told that I made it personal, and that I did it only because of the builders. And it is personal, and you people right there is why I kept being against it, because it is personal. Uh, Ms. Maria, we live out next to each other, and I was so happy to know that you bought the property you bought next to me, because I knew you were a Harris County person, and I didn't have to worry about it. So I'm telling y'all, it is personal. It ain't personal just to me, it's personal to all y'all. Now, uh, I did try to make this where we went to eight acres instead of 10, trying to make a compromise, and, and I didn't get to compromise. So, and I'm not saying I think eight's better, I'm just saying I tried to make a compromise, and, and we didn't get there. Because there are, you know, and I don't fault anybody up here for their opinions, you know, everybody's got an opinion, it's my opinion. But I've had a problem with the 10 acres in the mobile home, and the 10 acres of ag land, uh, and I'm not gonna get up here and do the what-ifs. Because the last time I did the what-ifs in our last big vote, then, you know, all the Facebook ninja people decided to call me all kinds of names. Uh, and, and I'm gonna be honest with you, I've been teaching schools for 35 years, and about, in 30 years in Harris County at my own, and I've been called a lot of names, that, that really doesn't bother me. Uh, and I got four grandkids, I can tell y'all right now, I get called a lot of names by them too. So pops don't want them to do wrong, you know, pops makes them do right. Uh, so I just want y'all to know, I appreciate y'all here, but as Commissioner Andrews said, we have had this for years and years. We did the comprehensive plan, I was not on this commission when we did the comprehensive plan. Uh, and I've stated at the last big vote we had, that I thought we ought to wait on that till the comprehensive plan's done. I would say the same thing here. Although, I do know that our Community Development Director knows that there are some things in this document, and as Pastor Lawrence said, the last time I held the thing up, said I didn't understand it either, it's that thick. But I know there are things in here that our Community Development Director, we need for some of the zoning. But I do not agree with the 10 acres. I've been opposed to that from the beginning, I appreciate each and every one of y'all for coming here, and, uh, I don't know how to postpone this, because if we postpone it, we may have to start it over, I'm not sure. Uh, but I can tell you right now that I won't be voting in favor of this, because I do not agree with the 10 acres and the 10 acres for mobile home. That doesn't mean that I disagree with everything in here, but that right there, I, I've never seen why we were trying to do that, and, and they've explained it to me four or five times, and I keep going back to landowners, and I do teach government, and I understand about the Constitution, and Commissioner Andrews is correct, that's why the government's there, that's why we have restrictions. She's not said anything that is not true. But the last time we had 900 people here that spoke against one thing is because they didn't like that development. It wasn't just because of what they were trying to do. So I'm just saying, that was three years ago too, because that was before Commissioner Irons was on here. So this is a whole different year, and it's a whole different situation. So I appreciate y'all coming, and appreciate y'all being here to do your voice tonight.
They don't like any developers either, because they've been here in everyone.
Rainey, correct me if I'm wrong, we did not have public hearings at the community center, we've only had six public hearings.
The community center was like, uh, uh, it was all, it was all court sessions.
Yes, but they weren't allowed to say.
But it was, it was public work sessions.
But they weren't allowed to speak.
That's right, that's right.
They came in and filled out a book with their name and code, right, we were from them.
There were multiple events, there were a few commission work sessions that Commissioner Langston referred to. There was also an all-day open house public meeting that was a presentation.
Where they could learn about it.
Correct, that's right.
Well, they could come to me. Yep. It's all day long.
And I did forget to make one comment, but there was some gentleman, I think it was, think of you, that made the statement, and I have talked to a lot of people, and he made the statement that the people are here because they're afraid.
That's right.
They're afraid it's gonna happen to their land. And that is the, that is the resounding opinion that I have from them. And it's that they're afraid, they don't know, they don't know what they can do. And when Commissioner Andrews talks about we have zoning, absolutely, and I'm in favor of zoning. I am not in favor of a board of five people who can tell me whether or not I can sell my land.
No more, comments to see.
I'm gonna say something, um, because I'm new to the board, you know, I've been up here not quite two years yet, and it's my second year. The biggest thing that I had an issue with, the reason why I ran the B on the commission was because I didn't, I saw things that kind of felt that I did actually didn't factor to. One, I'm a network engineer, I know how to bring broadband, I know how to bring internet to rural areas, I've done it all my life. So that was one aspect. The other aspect was, my family, we're talking about generational people that's lived in Harris County, my great-grandparents and my grandparents helped build out my Valley Baptist Church. They're buried, my grandmother, my grandfather's buried behind the church, my great-grandmother and my great-grandfather's buried right here in Hamilton Cemetery, along with my dad. So having investment into the county, I live in this county just as much as everybody else. I definitely am not sitting in this chair for faith, because it's definitely not worth the faith. So the reason why I step up to do this is because I want to make my county better than what it was whenever I got here. So the way that I look at this, is I've been begging and pleading people, because I've seen it from when I was on the planning commission, to now hearing the commission's here, I've asked people, don't just wait for us in your face to be able to come in and be part of the process. This process is moving 365 days a year, 24/7. It's moving. It was moving before I got here. And I stepped up, I saw the issue that I wanted to, felt like I could lend a hand to and be able to help our vision of Harris County. And everybody I represent, I represent the Catala, the Catala area. So everybody that I've talked to that's come to me said, we want to preserve Harris County the way we know it as Harris County. We want to be able to come out here, I don't want to see a concrete jungle like we see in Columbus, we want to get away from Columbus. That's why even people even transplant to Harris County, because families used to, that used to live here, they grew up here, moved away and then come back. They want to bring their families to Harris County and what they know and what they love, what, what's kept them coming back to Harris County. Going back to the ordinance, I don't like people telling me what to do with my property either. That in itself, I like less government, I don't like more government. Our properties in itself helps define the quality of life that we have in Harris County. What do we have in Harris County, what do we like? What do we like to be able to have neighbors that we don't have to worry about the crime that you see in Columbus? There's so many people moving into Harris County now, and so we're looking like Columbus. That's what we're trying to keep, keep from happening in Harris County. My thing of it is, is I did, I definitely asked to see if we could push something to make a huge gathering into the, into the school or into the high school, to be able to bring everybody up to have these open conversations, to figure out exactly what it is. We did have multiple sessions to bring the public in, and begging the public to come in. I'm on social media and I hate social media. You go to social media, you say one thing, it gets misconstrued five million times. Then you're in a never-ending cycle, running down a rabbit hole, trying to explain your original covenant. Because it gets sidetracked, and so many different side conversations are happening. My biggest thing is, is I really want people to show up to these meetings, show up to the planning commission, show up before it's in your face. Have vested interest into your county, you've got your property that you love, that's your property. But everything that happens around that, that's you too, that's me, that's all of us. We've got to show up and give our voice day one, not, not just now. Because now, yeah, it has been going on for two years, it started happening before I even got here. I'm, I'm having to catch up, and now I'm having to, you know, pretty much, I'm hitting ground running to try to figure out what these changes were, what's best for everybody else, not just you guys sitting here, but everybody that's not here today. Everybody that's called me wants to have that rural aspect. And if you're looking at something, like going to the internet, looking at what is affecting the United States today, go and look at statistics on what is the fastest depleting resource that the United States has, is agricultural land. Harris County has it, and it's plentiful. That is the fastest depleting resource in the United States. And A1 is agriculture. I don't know, I don't know if A1 stands for, you know, arbitrary, or whatever you want to name it, but it's agriculture, it's A1. Going back to that, my consideration to begin with, back in the day, was to have a big gathering, to have everybody up, we put it on the website, I know broadband's not here, that's one of the reasons why I stepped up and made the mission. We're trying to get that expensive, super expensive, but going to the paper, that's the next avenue we have. Other than having, you know, I don't know any other way to be able to disseminate that, or disseminating that knowledge down, besides being involved, being involved all the time, everything, not just on pressing issues like this. The 10 acres in itself, I've been all over the place with the 10 acres, because to be honest with you, I didn't know where to land on it, I didn't know where it's centered, it was five acres, it matched, or, or you need that, you need something that designate between the two definitions. You can't have, in my opinion, the same acreage for both definitions, that's why there's several classifications. Going into the 10, 8, 6, whatever it was, honestly, and they can even verify, I was all over the place with it, because I didn't know where to land on it. And definitely not trying to disenfranchise anyone in the county, definitely not. So my thing of it is, you guys are here expressing your concerns, and what you want done with your land, and how you want the county to move forward. And it needs to move forward with everyone, not just you guys, this group, not just another group that decides to show up on another day, collectively. That's my opinion.
Is this something that the people want to get done, y'all?
I'm sorry, sir, we can't answer any questions right now.
I was gonna say, the question about who benefits? When I look at this, um, I think that all the citizens who want to maintain a rural lifestyle in Harris County are the ones who benefit. I think my children, my grandchildren, your children, your grandchildren, your landowners here, if you have agricultural land, zoned land, I think you benefit. I have talked to county commissioners in counties that have been, they're extremely fast-growing around us, Fayetteville, talked to them, Greene County, talked to them, you know what they tell me? Y'all are right where we were 20 years ago, and we wish we could slow down that growth, do everything you can to slow down the growth, because you cannot imagine the problems we have now. And we're gonna grow, Harris County's a great place, we have great schools, it's a beautiful county, and we're going to grow. But are we gonna do it in such a rapid fashion that we can't keep up with infrastructure? Or are we going to slow it down and do it at a pace that we all can tolerate as we move forward? When we began building new schools back in the early 90s, we began seeing that influx of folks coming here for our schools, you know it's true. And we've seen our school taxes go up, up, up. Thankfully, they're gonna come down a little bit this year, I think. But we saw that influx, and the people who came were good folks, many of, some of you may be them. They're hardworking people, they're honest people, they're, they wanna make an honest living, and have their children educated well, and we've benefited from that growth. We have certainly benefited from that growth. We had years where we were building 400 new houses a year when I was superintendent, we managed that one. It was very, very difficult to manage it. But now, when you got 400 houses a year, every year, for a long time, it makes that growth much more difficult for all of us to handle as far as services are concerned. So who benefits from this? I think anybody who likes a rural lifestyle, who wants to maintain Harris County's rural lifestyle, um, I think that's who's benefiting. And I am an owner of a modular home on our property, so it's not that I'm against modular homes, I, I, you know, we've talked a little bit about modular homes being in the areas where they can go, but the single-wide, um, single-wide trailer that we all know, that went out a long, long time ago. So it would have to be a modular home that costs just about as much as a stick-built home these days. So I don't see that as an economic issue to the point of, of it being such a big deal. Because I know a lot of young people, people say, well, young people can't live in Harris County or afford to live in Harris County. I can give you the names and addresses of lots and lots of young people who have been able to afford to come here and live in Harris County, and, but they're not buying at million-dollar homes when they're 25 years old. But young people are moving to Harris County, that's why our schools are poor. And so, who benefits? I think everybody who wants to maintain a rural lifestyle, I think that's who benefits.
You know, there's one other comment, or a couple of comments I wanted to make, the thing of it is, is with me, and if you follow me on anything, whenever I discuss anything on social media, or even per, uh, you know, face-to-face in person, I'm not gonna placate anybody, I'm gonna give you the facts, and the facts are what they are. I'm not gonna tell you what you want to hear, or what I think you want to hear, or tell you something just to get your applause from me. It's gonna be the facts, and it's gonna be what you need to make an educated decision for yourself. That's the only way to give me the facts. And two, trying to tell somebody what they can and can't do with their property, I've hoped for a while, so has Commissioner Andrews, to have chickens, all of them are one, inside the county, you're in the county, and you're being told, man, you can't have chickens on your property. Inside, inside a neighborhood or inside a subdivision, I get that. We fought for it to be able to have chickens, how many years ago?
Three, it's only been here.
And there's been commissioners that have been like, no, I don't want chickens assigned to you, you're in the county. I don't care if they're in a subdivision or not, you're in the county. It's not Columbus, even Columbus lets you have chickens. The biggest issue is here, I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you something, or try to change the way that you handle your property, just to get you to like what I said. I'm gonna give you the facts, here's where we stand, what's your input? Give me your feedback, because I need your input too. I'm not sitting up here for me, I'm sitting up here for you guys, regardless if you're in my district or you're not in my district, it's all one Harris County. And that's what we all look at, this is one Harris County.
And as Mr. Irons mentioned earlier, thank you for showing up, and I'm glad y'all did show up, and I would hope that people would continue to show up in the future and pay attention to what's going on, and get involved. Um, whatever we do with this UDC tonight, whatever the decision may be, just keep in mind it's a living, breathing document. So, you know, enough contact and exchange of information with your commissioner in the future will help us to keep an eye on, on these codes to understand what's working and what isn't working, and it might not be the 10 acres, it might be chickens inside a residential. There's many, many issues in these hundreds of pages of documents, so just please stay involved, and then contact with your commissioners, and just remember that this is a living and breathing document. Are there any other comments? Are there any other comments on board? None? Is there a motion this evening?
I just wanted to confirm that the public hearing was closed. I didn't know that the process had been taken.
I make a motion to approve the amended ordinance and associated with the schedule.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second?
If I could make just a couple of points relative to motion. One, the conditions that were read in the public hearing. We want to ensure that those are appropriately addressed in a motion. Secondly, as I said, the question of effective date of an ordinance upon adoption needs to be addressed as well.
I would like to make the motion that we approve the amended ordinance to include the notes that we received, except for the Article 3 dealing with wells and the word foster family members under Article 5. And are you saying the fee schedule is separate?
The associated fee schedule is separate. What does that mean? But the...
We don't have an item on that.
But the dates are...
And the date effective January 1, 2023.
What about alcohol ordinance, does that have to go in this motion or is that a different one?
That would be a separate ordinance, yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion as I stated earlier, because they have living, breathing document. I think we need to keep an eye on and continue to monitor it and revisit it from time to time. But I would like to make the second on this.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Did we come up with a date?
January 1, 2023. Would be the effective date.
Well, I would like to say, to add to that, if this passes of January and goes into effect January 2023, I would like for us to revisit the 10 acres and all the issues that we've talked about to get data to see if it might, should be changed. I don't think we should wait till we have to do another study like we did this time. I think we should come back at least six months and take a look at it.
I would agree with that.
Bring it up in the retreat.
Yes. Because none of this is set in stone, nothing's set in stone. If we let, these commissioners got voted out, if every commissioner got voted out every place, they could come in and completely wipe the books and completely change everything, make it worse, or in some cases, for some people, make it better. It's just like having chickens, it's just like having anything else. And there's been times that commissioners have said, well, I don't want this to happen. Whether it be impact fees, whether it be anything, we can't control anything that happens to other commissioners. We can only control what happens here and what you guys want as a county owner.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All disposed. People, we're still carrying on a band and if you'd please move outside and throw in that conversation. We're not completely done with the UDC, if you all would like to...
So the vote that was taken was to deny the motion to approve with condition. So it can be taken up as future date, the alternate motion could be proposed, or any other action. So an alternate motion can be proposed to provide direction to staff for next steps. A table, for example, a motion to continue the discussion to a future meeting could be Direction, you know, for us to reconsider certain items, postpone to a certain date, or it could be simply assumed as a denial of the ordinance and we would restart the process involving application as a text amendment, presentation to the planning commission again, a public hearing, and then returning here for a public hearing if that's the direction we get.
I think Randy needs to bring us all those options, Randy. Because I don't let me do that.
It's in the way I understand it, the UDC was denied as an entirety, so we're back at square one. So we have, we revert back to our existing conroboration ordinances. And if we leave it, there's nothing on the docket to address anything. It's dead, it's just dead, never to resurface about a day unless y'all bring it back.
Let me ask you this question because I don't remember who brought it up. Said that we should table this to the comprehensive plan. If this is here, this is a no, we got that. But if we came back at the comprehensive plan with, because, you know, we're not going to throw this paper away. Somebody might. But if we came back at the comprehensive plan and used this to go through with the comprehensive plan, would that be something we could do so that we can get it right? I mean, I'm just asking because I don't know. So I'm asking you, Lee, I mean, because like if this is still here, you know, we've denied it, we get into the comprehensive plan, which is what, 2024, would we be able to use this as a guide to help us through the comprehensive plan? With the connection? I mean, I'm just, I always say because I don't know.
A typical approach from a planning standpoint would be update a comprehensive plan and then update ordinances per comprehensive plan policy and then update comprehensive plan and then update. So it's a cycle. So at this point in the cycle, we were in a normal situation of looking at ordinances after having adopted the comprehensive plan in 2019. So normally, we would, you know, complete this action and then comprehensive plan and then review and revisit ordinances and so on and so on. To maintain, as has been mentioned many times, this is a living document that requires processes and ordinance for adoption. The comprehensive plan is a living document, it's a policy document and guide. So typically, we address one and then the next and then continue to calibrate over time.
But, if you're proud to address it, you want... But the way I understood it was this UDC flowed from the comprehensive plan. So we did the comprehensive plan in 2019, knowing that after that is adopted, then we would go flowing to this. Now, so that was the process. Comprehensive first, UDC second. That's exactly what happened. But if we were to wait till 2024, do the comprehensive again and let this flow again, we're back to where we started. Every progression, two or three years in time, every... In six digits, sort of 100,000 dollars.
I guess I would propose that there are many, many solutions to current problems in the document that have been discussed that are imported from a technical standpoint as well as a policy standpoint. There are a number of issues that have been very thoroughly discussed and that are still unresolved based on the comment that was made tonight. It would seem appropriate, next step, to take on those issues that are of continuing concern, attempt to address those and ultimately approve the document that works and that solves all the problems that are present in the existing ordinances. Because a lot of what has been brought up tonight, if I may, is problematic for current ordinances as well. So maintaining the status quo is not supposed to solve a lot of the problem.
But Randy, I'm sorry. But Randy, this was the line, right?
The UDC was denied and it's...
That was my...
And it's dead. And so we revert back to the existing ordinances.
Right. I just want to make sure everybody understands.
So when we leave it here tonight, this is not a document any longer, it's there.
Right.
But we revert back to the existing ordinances and do the best we can with what we have.
That's right. However, I want to make sure that everybody that came up and spoke tonight, that many of your concerns are still valid concerns in the current document that's been there for years and years and years. You didn't fix anything, you know what I'm saying? Because we didn't say, I prefer this, I wish you would, instead of 10 acres, I wish you would do 6 acres. I wish you would do 8. The acreage, whatever that acre amount is, is going to be problematic for somebody, for somebody, just as the current 5 acres is. So, as you just said, voting it down didn't fix many of the problems that came up here tonight. So our next step then is to hear what we heard tonight and try to decide what are some of the things we heard tonight that we need to fix in the document.
Was it broken?
I know it's yours, but we didn't know that was an option for us to come up and tell you what we would propose instead of what was presented. We thought the discussion was about what is being presented and so that's what we spoke about at the time.
They can't change it. They can't. She can act like it, but they can't change it.
Please hold your comments, we're trying to have a meeting this evening. I understand, but I think they go ahead and talk to you at their next public hearing or wherever, but just please hold your comments right now so we can proceed with our meeting.
Can I ask, I need to ask you a question, Brian. Because I know we're also supposed to be voting on the ordinance to amend the alcohol ordinance for breweries, brewpub, distilleries, and microbrewers.
That will be on that too.
That was the question I asked, so if I voted no on that, that killed that.
There is no discussion for number four. But I think we need to go through the motion and deny that also and formalize it.
Do we need to deny it or do we need to...
No, you don't.
Yeah, I didn't want to.
Well, there is two things on there that we could go ahead and prove. Now...
Are we done with the UDC already?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, can you go on to number four?
Yes, so on to number four, our last item this evening, is an alcohol ordinance. At the request of the Board, the ordinance to regulate the sale and distribution of alcoholic beverages in Harris County has been amended to allow breweries, brewpubs, distilleries, and microbreweries. Also included in the amendments or revisions to show the application process, issuance of licenses will be administered by the Community Development Department rather than the Board of Commissioners. Additionally, a name change fee and a retype fee have been added to the alcoholic beverage license fee schedule. This would have been the only reason of this ordinance.
Yeah, and we still need to go ahead and do, we need to address certain things because if we don't change the ordinance, it doesn't come to our department. That's key. Because currently...
What do you mean it doesn't come to us?
Because currently, in the current ordinance, it is regulated that it goes to the county clerk, not to us. So that beverage still needs to change. The only thing that we would remove from it would be the definition of brewery, brewpub, distillery, and microbrewery because those were put in to coordinate as definitions with the proposed UDC. The other thing that would change would be the name change fee for $50 and the retype fee for $25 on the fee schedule.
All right, in the current UDC, what are we calling it? Current UDC, I guess. Well, current codes, what are...
Current ordinance, yes.
What's current ordinance, all right. Do we have anything in there that deals with breweries, brewpub, distilleries, or microbreweries?
Yes, sir.
But we have some in there that deals with wineries?
Correct.
Okay, because I know we changed that ordinance to allow wineries.
Correct.
So if this gets denied, it's not like we couldn't do an ordinance for the current codes to allow breweries, brewpub, distilleries, and microbreweries since we've done that for wine.
If you do that in here, you have to also reflect it in the UDC or in the new ordinance, yes.
That's what I'm saying, if we did a new ordinance like we did for wineries, it still goes through you with the brewery, brewpub, and still, I mean, I know we can't do that tonight. We gotta, it'd have to be written in all that. But that could take place.
And what you would, what you would need to vote on tonight for this to come to my department is to accept the changes in the proposed document, less than accept the four definitions of brewery, brewpub, distillery, and microbrewery.
Randy, do you agree with that, Randy, or not?
It seems that way along with the fee schedule that we have discussed because that is already a fee schedule.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything else in here because your redline version is the redline and the changes based on the UDC that you were considering. The definitions and the additions of those items are the only, you know...
The other thing...
Significant changes, the other ones are just...
The other ones are taking that from county...
Clarifications.
Yes.
Ex...
For a minute.
What about the adequate parking? That actually refers to the zoning ordinance, is that fine still?
The adequate parking would reflect...
The current zoning ordinance?
Well, no, because we wouldn't have these in the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, the Board specifically wanted to have the UDC and this alcohol ordinance together because one points to the other, they work in tandem. The Board specifically said, let's connect them together. That's exactly what we did this evening. So the ordinance as it's prepared points to a document that does not exist. So by approving this, you'd be approving, you would be approving things that doesn't exist, things that it's going to be really messy. So I would, I would recommend denying this like you did in the UDC, come back and revise the ordinance to point to what we have existing so it can matter.
Okay, can we put this on our retreat on August 9th for the breweries, brewpub, distilleries, and microbreweries to discuss the ordinance to point back to what we have now?
The clarification, yes.
Or staff can prepare a document in the next 30 days and have time to review it, prepare it, vet it, and then bring it to the Board for consideration.
Then I make the motion that we deny the ordinance to amend the alcohol ordinance for breweries, brewpub, distilleries, and microbreweries as long as staff brings us back a ordinance that will apply to the current ordinance that we have now.
I'll second that motion.
And we'll bring it back within 30 days.
So one clarification. In order for zoning to work in accordance with the proposed alcohol ordinance, there would have to be a zoning text amendment to address the issues proposed within the alcohol ordinance, brewpub, etc. So if not in tandem with the UDC, the alcohol ordinance would need to be adopted in tandem with a zoning text amendment, which would have to follow zoning procedures, departments needing two public hearings and planning commission review approval. So there's a longer path for a text amendment that needs to accompany the alcohol ordinance in the absence of the UDC.
Correct. And we will begin that process, but it's a long journey, but we'll start.
It's going from one stage.
We'll start again.
So we had a motion, correct? So we had a motion, correct?
To deny, but staff would start the process to do a text amendment so that this could be added into our current ordinance. And y'all can work that however legally, y'all need to work it.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?